I did find something I'll text it to you.
There. Wow, are you awesome. Can you move this?
Yeah.
But then I know.
Yeah.
Oh, it's funny. There we see. One additional point. She is. More than. You all. Yes.
Right, yeah, I I've seen somebody. Start to suck you her head. So. They're like, like, she. Yeah, so here she was on the action first. So, no, we can get that spot there. I sure heard you. Same.
I wish now. I was prepared.
Yeah, well, we can. Seriously. Yeah.
Hey, how you doing? Thanks.
Thank you.
You're all.
We love her.
We.
Now, just one piece around me was. We pay up. Usually, I'm. It's maybe it's just. Yeah, I still. Talking about.
Oh, yeah. It's best. Nah, the guy is.
What's on the regular meeting, you know, that from our fifty two order? All free fries. For the first treatment. We plan for your division. Like, you know, it's very. And to very long, like, which is. One day soon. It's just all. Let's see those dust. Roll call.
Fora.
Here.
Traders is excuse Florida.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Stratt.
Here. Okay, before we, well, move. I'm just asking all of you to please keep, uh. The Benson Central Kids that answer lines over the weekend, leave your thoughts and comments, please. The approval of the agenda. We've already got the resides ones, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Colonel.
Yes.
Traders, um, Traders is excuse Florida.
Here.
Yeah.
Send.
Here.
Stress. Yes.
Okay, we have no choice to approve before council. Public input, street influence, please stand to the podium. And address. Oh, go. Say your name and address, please.
Uh, Mr. Renee four four Parkview Lane. Uh. This is about the recycling bins. Uh, the issue is, uh, county came to me and asked if I would take them back. For a period of time. And I immediately said, yes, it's a public service thing. That's what I do. But one of the problems I had was I was introduced to some comments from this council to the commissioners. Regarding why was it moved from Mr. Renee's property? And I want to make sure we know and understand why it was removed. The answer was a tax issue. That, uh, bothered me quite a bit because the tax issue was after many years, about. Twelve thousand dollars here to run it with people to clean it up and volunteering to take it to begin with. My ta- the tax issue was my taxes raised thirty eight thousand dollars. Because of new usage. Of the bins being on there. And was assessed that my parking lot was a through street because people, because people came in. Ropped off their recycling and their garbage and their cans of paint and they left. Additionally, they increased my taxes twenty two thousand dollars. Because of the windows in the high bay, and it says on the form. Second floor, unreported. The fact of the matter is, a simple answer, truth, that it was a tax issue to the commissioners. I believe misled them. To believe that it was something I was not happy with about taxes. It was specifically about the recycling. Now, I volunteered to take it back with certain conditions. But I'm disappointed with the council. With an answer that says some tax issue. When in fact, it was about thirty eight thousand dollar additional tax rep, well, assessment. For housing, something that was a public service. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Um. Any other public input, please?
Okay.
Three minutes. Karen Cunningham, nine fifteen, Iron Street. I was raised as a fireman's daughter. And so that was our life. As being being a professional and a firefighter. So when I moved to the city, I asked some questions about our hydrants and I have, uh. Emails, uh, several people about that because it is my concern that. Growing up, I knew that our fire hydrants had to be inspected annually. And that information was available. They had to be tested and cleaned. I remember seeing the guys at that point, no gals. Uh, doing it. Annually to make sure that everything worked. My dad had explained to me that that was, you know, part of their duty. But also, it helps bring. Your insurance costs down and made sure that there was safety for all the citizens. So my comment is, I want to find out if that is done in this city. And when it will be done. And I'm bringing it forward for public. That's why I'm sharing it out, public opinion. So, and I understand it's comment, not discussion. But that is my concern.
Mike, can you?
Thank you.
Address her at another day.
I'll address it later.
Oh, you'll address it, wasn't it? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input, please?
Rick Schmidt, three, three, one, Forest Avenue. I want to thank the council for, uh, holding a public forum. Regarding the Ironman and, um. Getting feedback from as many citizens as we could. And I regret that I didn't speak that night. There were many. Uh, moving stories of people's emotions and experience and. And those that, uh. Strive to accomplish a goal and the memories that are made. All of those things are great. And, um, it's important that we celebrate those things. It's also important to talk about the. The economics of the Ironman and what it does to the city. Um, many businesses benefit from the Ironman. My business is one of them. There are businesses that don't. And, uh, some of those spoke on Monday. And it's always important to have. That kind of dialogue when making decisions like this because it does impact not only Frankfurt, the entire county. And you talk about businesses that are completely shut down that day because, and that's impactful stuff. And it's always needs to be part of the decision-making process when making big decisions like that. The Ironman's a big event. If it gets bigger. Is, is. Is too big, too much type of conversation. And so I. Would ask the council to consider all of those things when making a decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh. Letting us use your opinion to hold that.
I would, um, offer the theater for any. Of that, that the. City needs in terms of a big space to talk about.
Thank you.
Issues that are impact our community.
Thank you.
What's up?
She's working.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public?
Hi. Uh, Jeff Towsley, one thirty four George Street in Frankfurt. I'm really here tonight on behalf of the schools. And just to present an idea and something I think could be important down the road. Uh, as you know, we have talked about our school signs. Uh, those have been approved. And there's a couple. Curious what they're gonna look like. One is that slows up your school and one is. School in. The corner of Eleventh and Forest is the conversation mainly for tonight. Um, we've talked with, we've presented this once before. We're good to roll. But I thought of something that might be important as more of a historical document. Because superintendents leave, um. Boards change, councils change and so forth. So I wanted to share this with you and the proposal was just a very easy lease agreement between the city. And Franklboro area schools. I would hate to see us put that there and a few years down the road, we go, how did this get here? So that's what I would propose. Um, and I think Josh emailed this to you as well, but I'll leave this with you tonight. To take a look. Uh, we're super excited about the sign. It's gonna be great. Our district at both the elementary school. And that corner that gets so much traffic, uh, throughout the school year. We, and once you, as you know, we operate about nine, ten months out of the year. We don't have any intention of having the sign just sit vacant and with a blank screen. I think it's a great opportunity to advertise some things throughout our community throughout the summer months and worldwide. Uh, we have a. Really excellent relationship with the city on so many fronts. So I wanted to leave with us with you for your consideration. Thank you.
Tell me exactly where this will be considered.
I can.
Forest and.
Pinnacle to the highway, the center field of Lock, of Lockhart Field will be moved. Talked to Josh. About that. We met yesterday. I've also talked to Andrew Johnson. Lockhart Field will move the center field fence in. And he'll see, be able to see it coming from both the east and the west.
So it'll be north of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it'll be between the center field fence and the sidewalk.
Tree there.
Okay.
But we're not losing the tree. Heaven's know.
I said, fine, yes.
No, I don't replace this. We might have trimmed a branch, but we were to talk. Yeah, and we'll move the fence. If the road is here into the north and it'll have plenty of space. I will see it coming from both ways.
So is this flashing?
Machine, it's static. It is electronic, but it's not flash. Yeah, we're very, we're. It's not our intention.
This is to put school events.
Full events, receptions, things that are coming, game tonight, congratulations to students, so forth. And once again, I think it's a really great communication tool for our district, but more important, I think we can use it citywide as well.
Thank you. Any? Like info.
Really?
Uh, Randy Olson, I live at forty forty Mallon Road. Not in the town. I have a business and own property in the town. And, uh. What I'd like to know is, uh. From a little bit different perspective, we've all heard. All the good things and some negative things about the Ironman, but. I want to take a little bit different approach here. A little bit about the Ironman. The Ironman was purchased in twenty twenty. By Advanced Publications. From the Chinese group Wanda. Revenue for the Ironman competitions. Annual revenue in twenty twenty two was two hundred and sixty million dollars. All right. Who owns Advanced Publications? The company that owns Ironman. It's owned by the Newhouse family. Who's a multi, they have a multi. Media, media companies along with entertainment companies. That's part of their, who belong with the Ironman. Uh. The owner of. New House or the owner of. Advanced Publications is Donald Newhouse. Who has, uh. Net worth of twenty billion dollars. Uh, yearly revenues for the. Advanced publication. Is two point four billion dollars. Well, here's my question. What is the average citizen taxpayer in Frankfurt? Get out of this. Ironman competition as far as for the city. Um, farmers market have to pay to rent their space. Um. If there's a carnival on the Fourth of July. They paid to rent that space. Um. You want to use the boat launch? You have to pay to launch your boat. Uh, art fair. In Market Square Park, you have to pay for a spot. My question is, why are we given all this property? And the use of our streets? To a multi-million dollar. Multi-billion dollar. Company. For free use. Um. He talks on it. Um, I would think if they face the. Why don't? The city, why doesn't the city charge them, say, like? Fifty thousand dollars for the week? That could be put in this city treasury. I just don't understand. I understand all the good things and the negative things that go along with this competition. But I think the city ought to benefit somehow from this. Along with the. Taxpayers who live in this. Area. I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Any ever public input? I just. Okay. So. What do you say? What's next?
This sounds super.
Don't help out.
Excuse me.
Christine Murphy, um. I own a business in Frankfurt. Um, I'm just. What Randy had to say. There's, there's issues and that's why I was asking for before if there could be a committee of people who are involved. Other than, you know, we never knew the chamber was involved. And now we were told the other night the chamber is involved. I've never seen anything from them about Ironman. Um, but a committee of some sort to help. Enhance. The kids in the city, people getting involved with their, to their. Sports, their, um, robotics, whatever, can make money helping park cars, taking over, uh. The doctor's office next to me is willing to give his parking lot. You know, so there's, there's lots of ways to do that. But right, right. Part of the one percent that don't pay the taxes, we as business owners pay. And it's really something that should be addressed. And we have not heard the whole money. What Alyssa gave to us the other night? She should have had a handout. She should have said something about what, what it costs and what we get. And so my opinion is make a committee if you want to do this. There are other ways that we can help. The Benzibus, for instance, I cannot tell you, I've gotten five thank you notes. A woman and her two-year-old son. Couldn't get the Benzibus to take her back to the high school because. Guess what? It doesn't run in the middle of the day. What is Ironman cheat that they can't pay for the bus to run all day long? So I had, because this little boy was on foot. I said, come on, get my car. I'll drive you to the high school. Another person who I helped with parking and different things. We're not against Ironman. There are wonderful people who do it, but let's get together. And look at the problems that those of us who are out there. The whole weekend, the whole week. When they're doing things, see the problems and have input that way. And you're going to go ahead and do it. I do not suggest doing it for many years. Do it one year at a time. You said it the thing. You don't want to do this every year. Well, maybe we have to do it every year till we get it right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public input? Hey. We're getting, uh. And thank you all for your comments. It's for us, pardon us.
We had a few different. Items. Uh, Robert Rulow, he is the chairperson of. Head of. Division, Tampa, we're about. Sent a letter about the training, opening and share some concern. Uh, for the city. Marilyn Smith, she's a member of the PEO, sent a thank you to. For meeting the commandership.
No.
Is the sergeant. To. Just one. Also, uh, keep Cedar Home and the Frank or Fire Friday for, 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 for the nine one one ceremony. Tina Dossinger, uh, gave a letter of support for the Ironman event. I just, I don't.
But you.
Uh, also gave a letters.
Please look in that to. Through all of the minutes, um. September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, because there was some economy comments, um, the public hearing. Uh, process had a chance to use it. So I want to just address those. That are next, whatever we do involve. So. I saw no corrections. So I'll make a motion to approve the regular council meeting of nine seventeen, twenty twenty four, as per Senate.
All right. I mean, from.
Hey, hell. Approval of the bills.
All right. Make the motion to approve prepaid vouchers, number five, six, seven, three, five, three, five, six, seven, seven, nine. HRA number eighty eight, forty two through eighty eight, fifty two. In the amount of two million, two hundred seventy two thousand, one hundred thirty six dollars, eighty three cents, of which. Two billion, twenty one dollars, three hundred. Two, two million, twenty one, three eighty eight, sixty for taxes. Payroll voucher number four, one, five, one, four, through four, one, six, five, three, and E F T number six, seven, nine, three, six, nine, three, in the amount of. Hundred and sixty six thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, sixty five cents of which. A hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirteen, thirteen cents for wages. Twenty five thousand, five hundred fifty nine, fifteen cents for employee retirement benefits. Three thousand, six hundred and sixty eighty six for employee deductions and. Twenty four thousand, six hundred thirty seven dollars, fifty one cents for federal tax, I suppose. Yeah.
Overdose.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yeah.
Stress, yes, forla.
Yes.
Okay, uh, for the monthly bills, I'll make promotion approving vouchers, five, six, seven, eight, zero. Through five, six, eight, two, eight, and the amount of a hundred and fifty four thousand. Four hundred and ninety eight dollars and eighty four cents as presented.
Blackness.
Wilson.
Yeah.
Stratt, yes, forla.
Yes.
Order.
Yes. Okay, moving to the council members reports, uh, Eric.
Unfortunately, I was out of town, uh, um, uh, last week, so I was not able to. Tell me either if I, uh, report, so I.
Okay, Brady, okay. And I did go to the DDA, so I'll, I'll report on that. Okay. Uh. Dale is not here, but I will report, uh. Applications for, uh. The position of fire chief.
Police chief.
Uh, police chief, I'm sorry. But anyway, they are closed, um. Uh. Dale and I talked this morning and because it's going to be a whole council interview. We feel that the whole council should get all of the applications and reduce them. And let us know who you would. Choose. I think that's only fair. If we're going to have the whole council do the interviews, you need to see the patients and that's what all of your. Um. Things are for, um. I don't know about water and sewer. I guess Jeff. For it on that. Finally, commission, I did not attend that. So Josh, they'll probably fill us in on that. Um, finance, uh. The only thing I can report is Chris has been diligently working. To balance all of the account she's gotten down to. Very minimal dollar amount for. Where she started. And she had to go all the way back to two thousand and nineteen in order to get all of the accounts balanced, uh. And kudos to you for doing that.
Thank you.
See, we did not meet. Tree board, we did. Um. We are going to be moving five. And three sycamore trees out of the nursery. Uh. In the fall, we are going to start the week of ten twenty one of, uh, finishing up. The plan of the forty trees and seventeen more for the heart connector project that's. What is the one that is, uh. Twenty two across from the elementary school. That's where that is, um. And. We've already heard about the, uh, elementary school signing. Signage, so that, uh. We were up in the air about that. Um. We need this day to come in and I believe Jess is. Jess has already contacted Shannon about that. Um. On October twenty third, there's a student project, uh. That is in the works. Uh, we are going to get more, uh. Compost, uh, for, from some of the trees that we already need. Uh, Jim Gerbowski's team is going to be digging out some of the trees in the nursery. And they're all going to be marked with blue tape and identify what they are because once the leaves fall off, we don't know. What kind it is. Um, and we're also working on, uh, finishing up more of the raised beds. Uh. Uh, let's see. We are talking about. At the marina when all of the cars, uh, park. Between the trees, we're, they're very concerned about damage that might come to that. So Jeff is gonna sketch up a plan. To see how we can prevent that. And, uh, we are working with Mr. Redman at the school to get. Students involved in this because he has the one program that. Um. See, that's pretty much. Uh. Our next meeting is November thirteenth. Uh. And as. You may or not have noticed the. Prototype benches are in. In front of City Hall. So that was pretty much it on that. And I guess I'm gonna report on DJ. See if I can play if I knows. So here we go. Um. We did hold a strategic planning, uh, under the, uh. Facilitator of this negra. Uh, we listed, uh. Many of the. Uh, priorities that the DDA needs to see for. Uh. The future of the city, one of the prime, primary things that we want to see brought in. Um. The marketing website is up and running, uh. And first they had beer week and the fall festival, and I believe this is the week for the film festival. Uh. We talked about the. Corridor improvement opportunities, the E D charging stations. Are they online now, Josh?
Supposedly, the, this week they will be.
Okay, which is behind City Hall in case you weren't aware of that.
Yeah.
Uh, our business accelerator task force, are we meeting this month, Josh?
No, I'll reach out to Mark Smith though. I did have a good conversation with him.
Yeah.
He does, he has some site plan work that he wants to go over with us. Uh, I'll reach out to him, see if he's gonna be available.
Okay, because we really need to do that.
Yeah. We're kind of in a position. You know, face, face meeting with him and present what he's done.
Yeah, in which I guess he does have a plan and is prepared. Uh, he caught Josh at a football game, so. Um, and. After all of our commitments, uh, money-wise. Uh, we should have approximately a hundred thousand to work. Uh. And Josh's reported, he'll. He updated us, um, sidewalk repair. He updated us on sidewalk repairs. And, uh. And he will cover that in his report. Um. That was pretty much it. Oh, and then we did have under new business. Back to the Brooks car show, it's kind of been in the works, there's two hundred and fifty, uh. Cars that want to come to Frankfurt. We don't know where we're gonna put them, uh. But, uh, Josh is still in con- conversation with them as to. Uh, they wanted us. Most towns means. We're look. Maybe. Be what Josh had said. Has been taught. Possibly, uh. Having it in the evening. This is. That. I think the. And I, um, the planning ad hoc committee, what we're basically working on now is, uh. Through top. Checking within the height restrictions, we're. Gonna be working on that a lot more. So nothing has been passed out really to the planning commission at this time. Brady.
All right, uh, public safety, we haven't met in a while, um, I was just talking with Chief Cedar Hill there before the meeting, uh, we're gonna get a meeting on the books next week, I think. Um. Haven't determined the time just yet. We'll get to that. Um. Rockford, we met Monday, the seventh, um. We discussed dog park rules, I think we came up with a pretty basic. Uh, dog park rules moving forward. Uh. The irrigation is in at the dog park, finished and functioning, if anybody has noticed, the brick is getting a little greener down there. Uh, we are still slowly inching on both. Fellow's bathroom and Lake Michigan Beach bathroom, Josh has some. Been reaching out to a couple of companies that are prefab, as long as one contractor. Uh, we did get some quotes. Um, we're reviewing those. Um, to see that they're pretty expensive right now, um, so we're, we're moving slow on that depending until we can. Um, see if we can find a more cost-effective route. Um. About it for the record. Uh, airport authority, not much change at the airport, um. Some new. Uh, chain hoist going in for the hangar doors, um. M dots advising us that we need to update our lighting, uh, which is. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um. What else is going on at the airport, um? Glider club, we initially thought was coming back, glider club has now folded. Uh, due to lack of membership. So I guess we won't be seeing the glider club come back. Uh, there is interest in maybe in a new club and trying to bring it back, but, um. Don't count on anything coming too soon. So, uh, other than that, the airport continues to do well, Brooke's doing great, she entered a new role out there as, uh, airport manager. Uh, also. The new radio station that is on our beacon tower. Hundred point one woo-woo is up and running out of Alberta. Uh, if anybody cares to tune in, actually, uh.
One hundred.
One hundred point one. Woo-woo.
What?
W U Q U.
M S N F L.
Uh, yeah, it's low power F M.
Okay.
It is being broadcast out of a fifth wheel trailer in Alberta.
What's it is?
Stuff, but they're doing some neat stuff with it, you know? Trying to do local interviews and historical stuff about Frankfurt, Alberta, um. So I've actually listened to it quite a bit. I would, uh, recommend it, then. Tell me I notice, be ready, be ready for the podcast, oh, there you go, there you go. So, um, other than that, yeah, no, I have nothing else to report. Can't be.
The Kenzie. You got nothing, okay. We'll move on to the partners reports, Chris. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen, that's okay. I got up, then I sat down, like, hello, hey, I'm sorry, no, that's okay.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, at our last, uh, board of commissioner meeting, we had eleven action items, one that pertains to Frankfurt is. We approved the emergency communications towers links with you, which you already know that, but for the benefit of the public. Uh, the other thing is in Frankfurt somewhere, and I don't know the address. You have Hope House, which is. Hope House.
It's on Maple Street.
Okay, and we approved the two percent. Tribe money coming to Hope House, so. What that amount will be, I don't have the exact amounts, but it, it will all go to Hope House. And they did a fabulous presentation to the board of commissioners. So we were very grateful for that. Then in the afternoon, we had the study session. And. Thinking ahead. Okay, I wasn't sure, I thought you had a question.
Sorry. So, Hope House, Gary.
May. Okay. Um. We were discussing re- our. Master plan. Uh, and that is coming up for, um. The public hearing, which will be on twelfth November during the B O C. And in that, we have been asking for, and in my minutes, I know. Chris always has them posted online, in my minutes, I have the link for the public to list comments there. One of the things that I brought up in study session, because we have been guided to include this. Is renewable energy and how it fits into the county plan. It's not the county dictating. What goes into it. But words like advocating for sustainable development practices. Work with municipalities to create improved infrastructure. There are a list of key phrases. That should be in the master plan for renewables. Um, to help us get. We have a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars coming to the state, I was told, early next year. And for us to have key phrases in the master plan. Then that will help. The cities, the municipalities. Get those, that grant funding, on a rubric, you would get like points for having certain words. Okay? So. My question, I, and I know you did email me. Uh, but for the ben-.
Wish, Josh, we do have renewable, we have wind. And solar in our ordinance system, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was right. It, no, and I didn't doubt that, but for the benefit of the public, because they were a part of that email conversation. Um, I did ask, because one of the commissioners. Said that it's in everybody's master plan, by everybody, he means the township's, which is, you see. And we all looked at one another, it was maybe in one or two of his, but we didn't know, so I. I suggested to the commissioners, go back to. Whoever's in your district and ask that question. And you did get back to me on that, but if we include this verbiage. General support verbiage, it acts as a tool. For the governing entities in the county, the townships, the city and such. Instead of us, you know, being triaged and just responding to things, so. I brought that up, it had a pretty good conversation. Out of the commissioners, only two of us voted for it. So. I would encourage, if you have opinions on that, to reach out in the comments, and that is posted, it's in my report. And maybe come to the hearing on the twelfth, if you can. Uh. Other than that. That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Any, have any questions for parents?
Last time you get to ask their question.
No, don't you go to December, no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's different for, yeah, you do have a little bit more.
And I'm working on something else, so what's happening there? You know me, I always go up.
At least.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now the department reports, Chris.
Um, I'd like to give an officer Ferguson, uh, cheers to him after six years with the city. Um, he submitted for the Iron Man reimbursement, as, as the first round of August reimbursed before, um, early voting. Again, us keeping up with the Omar Township did cut quite a bit of the costs. Um, so reimbursement, we're looking at three hundred and eleven dollars versus. Putting the whole bill ourselves, so that's, you know, a little, everything adds up.
Chris, will you, for the benefit of the public, that it's here about Iron Man, uh, read off what we are going to get at?
So in September nineteenth, I submitted to Iron Man and Voice for ninety thousand, four hundred and thirty-one fifty-one. Uh, the police department for wages, benefits and expense reimbursement was three hundred and seventy-seven oh three. Department of Public Works, which was, uh, spoke this summer and some of our individuals who are full-time. Reimbursement of seven hundred and thirty-three forty-eight, and fire department was eight thousand, three hundred and ten.
Thank you, Chris.
Um, please remember, early voting starts. Um, this op, this room will be unavailable from October twenty-fourth through November fifth. Um.
Twenty-four, six.
Um, yep, it will have weekends. It starts the twenty-sixth, but on the twenty-fourth, we need time to prep it if you're ready, um. So it'll, it will be in meetings here, um, Jennifer did tend, the audit was, yeah, the audit from October first and fourth. Uh, it seemed to go very well, as the mayor had discussed earlier, we had some issues, there are certain thresholds which they allow. The city met those thresholds, therefore. It was time to nuggle down and really dig in deep, and. So I spent lots of time here on the weekends and otherwise, but it worth it because, as she said, um. Very pleased with where we ended, so, um, going forward. It should be much easier and much more put together and. Um, there shouldn't be any issues we ran into and so on, so. Um, it's a good thing, um, I anticipate, I did receive from Jefferson Solutions today the O P A portion of our audit. Um, so I will be sending that after I answer one question tonight, send it up. Um, for them, I expect to give that to the auditors, which is part of their whole package, so that is pending, so I think things are coming along.
Is this our year for that actuary report?
Yes.
And we included it in our budget, correct? That's right, uh, okay.
So, and I believe that's four eight hundred dollars for the actuary.
Yeah.
Um, so, yes, so it seems that things are going well. Um, I didn't hear all the samples seem to go well, I didn't have any negative feedback from the auditors. Um, so.
Which we, I think we expect to get the presentation in November sometime.
Hoping.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that's the plan, we were, we were waiting on Jefferson Solutions.
Yeah.
So, and I gave it some better information to them July first, so it's taken them that long to get it to us.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Chris, and that was. A lot of work for you, and I think, yeah, so, kudos.
It's worth it, what's happening here?
I would have loved to been with you, because I like digging into stuff like that.
I chase guns, so.
So. Okay. City superintendents, Josh.
All right, our Department of Public Works crew is doing an amazing job, uh, right now we're transitioning out of summer immediately into fall, um, that sprung on us here this week. Um, so we're getting all of our parks squared away for that in anticipation of, of a change in the weather. Um, we're also getting the beach prep that I don't know, seen down there, we got some of the. The gates and everything up to help some of the blowing sand that we get this time of year. Uh. Part of Public Works crew is also in, uh. In the. Process of squaring away all of our salt sand needs for the winter, we collaborate with the Benson County Road Commission on that. And they're also getting all of our equipment ready for our winter needs, uh, today, they removed all the docks, the voting docks on Marina.
I saw that.
Uh, voting T dock and the launch ramp. Uh, that went probably as smooth as it's gone. The last thirty years that I've been a part of it, um, it went extremely smoothly. Today, so, uh, it's a good sign of what to come.
In the past, we've always used blood.
We've always used blood.
But what did we do this?
Um. Well, this spring, we, we went with a new company, uh, it's a. Company out of Cala. Um, and that went well, we just had to, you know, equipment issues early on, and we stayed with that company. Um, no issues, they, they came in this morning, everything was squared up. So, uh, we were done by noon, getting all the floors out to the T dock, so.
Great.
Very smooth process, uh, went well. Um. Marina's closed, so we're gonna be in the process of winterizing that facility, the launch ramp's got a couple more weeks to go. Uh, we will be transitioning the fish cleaning station. Uh, we do need to circle back and have a conversation with you on tackle, and what our fishing trail. Um. Plans are going into next year, he plans on continuing that, but I'd like to have. A little more firm agreement with them, so we avoid what we experienced this year where we had to bring in a separate company and, uh. To remove five point three tons of fishing trails, uh. I mean, that. It's a lot of fishing trails, but, you know, the positive aspect of that is great fishing year. Um, but thankfully, we were in a position. To where we were able to get that taken care of, uh, on a shore or. So we didn't have any, any issues with snow and fish down there, um. But we definitely need to circle back and have a conversation with you on tackle. See what the, the long-term plan is with the fishing trails and. Uh, we've also had a conversation with Corey Brown at his company, with Northern disposal, to see what kind of toll they, they could play. If things don't work out with your tackles, we got kind of a, a plan A and a plan B for that. Going into the, the shoulder season, so we're prepared coming into this, this spring. Uh, October twenty-third, our seventh grade students at Frankfurt. Uh, middle school, there's about forty of them, are gonna come down and they're gonna do a, a trail cleanup and a beach cleanup. And it sounds like, uh, one day a month. That's gonna be a, an opportunity for that, that group of kids to, to do some service projects, so, to me, so.
What day began?
Uh, October twenty-third. We were trying to get, uh, project with it, with the tree board, we just couldn't coordinate it. No, we always could. Utilize help along trail board or by the recycling site. And then, uh, beach cleanup project as well, so. Uh, you see those kids out, uh. The twenty-third in the morning, so. Talk at, wait till, and thank them for their, their civic duty. Our lighthouse fundraising group, uh, have been really working aggressively. Um. Over the course of the summer. You know, we started at about forty-eight thousand dollars in our reserve account. Uh, we're close to a hundred thousand dollars now, so the fundraising efforts that we've done. Over the course of the summer. Uh, Corner Jam, our local, uh. Jewelry shop. It's on the north side of Main Street in the three hundred block. Um, they've been actually taking old glass. That's, yeah, there you go, and it. So this, this, this town's amazing, so he's taking some of the old glass that's broken. Uh, that we had stored just on the floor of the, the lighthouse.
And those were just windows, it had nothing to do with the light?
Yeah, nothing, just, just windows that.
That's accurate.
Ninety. Over the ninety-two years that that structure's been there, um. Uh, it's been accumulated and, and he's been able to, to make jewelry out of it, and I think, Chris, I don't know what the exact number is, but well over six thousand dollars. That he's donated personally, just with the proceeds from the sale, so. It's just, uh, you know. You know, he came to us with, with a lot of energy, he says, I don't, I don't have a lot, I need to give you back that talent. And he knows, he's got an amazing talent that he's used to the, to the benefit of the community, so. That project's moving forward, uh, rather well. Um, I also had a really good conversation with the Seaberry Foundation, they wanna play a role in this, and then, uh. Another resident, um, might wanna put up a, a challenge, a pretty significant challenge. Grant, and then, uh, a, a local family, uh, gave us ten thousand dollars, Carol Stack, the Anthony family.
Uh, his father. Was, uh, he had a fishing boat, I don't.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it was a very generous donation. Uh. So.
Yeah, so we're, we're making a lot of headway with, with the lake. Um. The Breakwater, which is owned and maintains, or is supposed to be maintained. Um, the breakwater, which is owned and maintained or supposed to be maintained, I should say, by the Corps of Engineers. Uh, they are in the process of designing a new structure. Uh, they're in the early phases of that, so we'll continue to collaborate with them. It's pretty important to have that synergy. You know, as we get to the point that we wanna do uh some lighthouse repair. Um, we're also revisiting how we wanna take care of the lighthouse. We're looking at phased approach. Um, so we can slow some of the deterioration down. Because one point one million is is a is a lot of money to raise to do a whole preservation. And it would be in our best interest to align ourselves with Corps of Engineers and and that project, so we don't we don't have obstacles and run into issues.
Thank you.
Um, continuing to move forward with our sidewalk project. Uh, we had some work done this uh Bob Kirby's gonna continue to move forward as long as weather anticipates and prophesies when that work going around found. Our main focus is dealing with heat extensions of the sidewalk in in various locations throughout the community. Uh, we will do a complete sidewalk expansion down Second Street. Um, that will occur also, um.
That gonna be uh just here?
Uh, we're trying, we're shooting for. I'm working with uh Consumers Energy because there is a street light found that be be removed. That's in process right now. Uh. Our T M F grant, which was the two hundred and sixty six plus minus thousand dollar grant that we received from Eagle to do our galvanized lead line investigation projects um that has concluded. Um, Spicer Group is in the process right now of crunching all the data, be meeting with them in the morning to finalize that, determine exactly how many of those services that we feel we have based on that data. Um, and that'll be submitted to Eagle uh by their uh uh number sixteen data. Um.
Tomorrow.
That's tomorrow, right on top. And uh, um, I think I think Eagles uh portal system is gonna, it's gonna see a lot of them tomorrow. Because this is a, this is a big deal for a lot of communities that Eagles put on us.
And I might correct that they do all of Main Street, that's why that was.
Yeah, we had it coordinated and we we did this with the businesses. We know we have an older section of water being Third Street to Ninth Street on Main Street. We don't know exactly what service lines consist of. Uh, because through the years, you know, they might have updated it, new businesses came in. Uh, so that allowed us, we we targeted Tuesday, Wednesday of last week. Uh, those, oh, the last possible time we could do it, we we coordinated things with the with the North businesses. We essentially closed the parking area on North Side. And uh, we were able to investigate, determine what type of pipe material we had and be backfilled and and repaired everything. I I hope it was seamless for the business community. We tried to pick the two uh potentially slowest days of the week to to do that. Um, it's my understanding that that businesses went on as normal and and there really were no major issues associated with that, so it was great to here because you never wanna, you know, we 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 don't ever wanna disrupt the business activity, um, but there's things that obviously come into play and then that requires us to do some logistical things just to make sure that we fulfill some of the needs that we need to do with the that project went really well. Um, last month, we awarded our paving projects from a category B grant from M dot. Elmer's uh plan is on paving James Street from our ninth to Parkview. Parkview from one fifteen to Hall and Beach Street from Bellows to Corn, and they plan on doing it next week. If the weather does not cooperate, we run into problems, they're gonna hold their price and we'll do it in the spring. M dot is okay with that, and it actually helps us with our Michigan Avenue project. Um, because uh we needed to do a little bit more investigation on the sewer main to really feel comfortable. You know, we don't wanna put all this work in effort and then have issues with some infrastructure while we have the road opened up, so we're gonna finalize some of the details of that. So we should be in a really good position to bid out um some of the sewer main and storm work on Michigan Avenue. Um, part of that will will have some curb work done too. All of it will receive new pavement from Main Street up to uh Beach Street. Uh, including Heffernan. Uh, in addition to the work on Michigan Avenue, we'll be doing water main and sewer work on Winnebago and also some work on Main Street as well. That'll occur. That project will definitely occur in the spring. And then over the course of the winter, uh, further compliance with some of the Eagle requirements. You know, Jeff Cockfield and I will be working with Spicer Group. Their engineering for Montevan, see that we've been working with to help us update our general plans by the latest study with Eagle. Uh, so we'll be busy uh this fall and this winter, getting everything ready for spring work activity, and then that project will will be uh proceeding first time this spring, so we'll get those bids out sometime this winter. Uh. You mentioned the planning commission, uh, what they talked about on their agenda. You did mention the rooftop use within the existing height. That's gonna be an ongoing conversation for them and the zoning ordinance review subcommittee. Uh, but we also talked about, right now we have a dangerous building ordinance that has an attractive nuisance component that works as a light. And between the conversations that we're having at planning commission level and what we're having at the construction board appeals and zoning board appeals level, we feel it's in the best interest to separate light from dangerous buildings. Have an independent light ordinance, so we'll be working on that as well. The dangerous building ordinance works in that capacity, it's gonna be a lot better for us to work with uh certain properties if we separate light from the dangerous building. It just uh, you know, makes the process a little bit easier on everybody. Uh, we also looked at some opportunities, some great opportunities coming up. Um, there's three different great opportunities that could help us with planning. Um, we've been talking about that Holden's corridor. You know, working with the Lucky family and those other property owners to see what that could look like if it was fully redeveloped based on the goals and objectives of the community. Uh, we have some wetland delineation work that would need to be done, environmental work that would have to be patched together, but also some water sewer storm infrastructure expansion, so we're looking at some grand opportunities that could help um cover the costs associated with that work. Uh, that comes into play too in our conversations that we have with Luke Smith with M I H Q as well. In closing, the launch ramp really did really well this year. We have great team and a dedicated staff, um. You know, between the the staff at the Marina and and Cheryl at the Launch Ramp and we all, Cheryl, heck, so she's amazing. Uh, of course, the Marina staff does an amazing job as well. Um, we'll be looking at doing a a building expansion on Marina for storage capability. And then also looking at whether or not we wanna proceed with uh more uh Waterways Commission grant to look at updating the floating docks. Updates of the other capital improvement infrastructure that we have down on the street. Some of the some things of the building we're looking at, that'll be a uh an initiative that the Marina Authority will be looking at as we move. Any questions for me?
But I just said from the thing, did you attend the housing?
No, unfortunately.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, Spicer has been wonderful to work with as far as getting reimbursements. Reimbursements are coming in in a timely manner, so that's, they're they're doing a great job.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with.
Yeah.
That's true. Uh, while we're having all this paving done, uh next, potentially next week. And uh, we get the the dip in L Street, L Street, go back up there. He uh he went up there and reheated it. And and rolled it, uh. So so Scott Brown will will take care of that, patch marks.
Okay.
I just, yeah, it's been bugging me for a while, I didn't know, I guess that.
Well, you mentioned that, you know, because the day it was done, I was, this looks nice, and Joe Thompson following, he was all happy the way the block was skirting across and then it must have settled right at the butt joints.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and and I.
Said he needed that up last.
And it has proved there's still just a little.
All right, we'll talk to him.
Just a little bit, I'll talk.
Just food for thought.
Yeah.
Drive over with your baby and and determine how much of your ass is ahead, but then want to go over themselves.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh? Okay, chief of police, uh, the report is in the book, um. Fire chief.
Hi. Well, currently we have about uh twenty three, twenty four active members. Um, generally trainings we get between twelve and twelve and eighteen members that show up, so very uh, very productive. Uh, still continuing to work on rentals, um inspections that are coming on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Uh, some of the training that we've done so far is we're basically outfitting four engine three right now, setting our list together to to buy a solo and N F P A nineteen oh one requirements onto that truck, and then also uh uh, we'll be finishing, probably finishing the outfitting to try to get out it. Hoses are gonna be tested on all the trucks this coming Thursday uh for N F P A and ISO requirements, we'll be pressure testing. Make sure that the pigs are tight. Uh, the the hoses can handle pressure. Um, also, um, so our equipment on the uh uh we calibrated the tri gas meter, we had a tri gas problem. Uh, the oxygen sensor had failed on one of them, so it goes back, I shipped it back at Grand Rapids. We got that back, it's all repaired. Um, one of the headsets from his David Clark headsets had, he shipped to Massachusetts, that was uh repaired, it's coming on, it's wearing back. Uh, crack in four engine tubes, uh, we got cracked from something and uh it was flying out of the out of the driver's vision, but as soon as it started traveling, it was going across driver's vision. That was the, it had to be, they had by law, it has to be changed, so I had that squad stopped down. Um, all in all, uh, public safety as we go into uh the darker months ahead, uh, time to check your smoke detectors and carbon dioxide, so that's between stress and ball speed. And work on state lands. One of the things that uh public safety that's coming up this coming Friday is a public safety day over at the elementary, there're gonna be law enforcement, EMS. Uh, the dispatchers are gonna be there and the fire department's gonna be there from eight to eleven. And we're taking roles with all the elementary students coming through and and meeting all of us. So that's some of the plans that we've got coming up. On the nineteenth Saturday, we have a work be almost gonna get together, we got some rearranging to do inside the the fire station, some cleaning, it's gotta be done. Um, other than that, uh, a happy note was had a chance to let my little type the little ones for the first day of school cross, and that was great. Um, helping them uh put out, got a banner decently said, uh, um, you know, be safe walking, walking back. And uh, one of the things was uh, did you believe that we were walking with the class of twenty thirty seven? Yeah.
That's wow. Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to all business. Iron Man holds vision. I'm gonna make a few comments. If I can find all my notes. I, after our public uh hearing, I was asked uh how many volunteers? And I did uh contact Davidson, yes, Hannah Davidson, who takes care of all of the, uh I shot way highs, it was only eight hundred and fifty, not two thousand. Like I quoted to Chris, that's how many that, um. And thank you, Randy, for researching all of that information. I I I really, really appreciate that. That's not, that's knowledgeable to me, um. Uh. And that's very helpful, and I agree with you that we need to ask for more money than, you know, going forward. Uh, which is an option that we can do. Um, so, and into Chris's comment. Yes, this contract that's before us is for uh two years. But I like Chris's um comment about a committee, a local committee, to uh take part of the planning at of that, which I think we can do. You know, this, we'll do this in the next year if we go ahead and pass this. And plus, see what we did wrong and see what we did right into the next year. We asked, yes, I was the one that asked for more than one year. So correct, so that we don't have to keep doing this over and over. Uh, I was, I was very uh pleased with the turnout. Uh, personally, I took note that we had, yes, we did. Uh. Some businesses were affected. But this is just me. What we need to do is look at the Thursday, Friday and Saturday before, not just that one day to see and the days after on how that affects the community. I know this year, and as far as having more than what we had this year, we were sold out this year, so there cannot be any more than what we had this year. Uh. Uh, I got two more uh comments. Positive comments about this today, and then I got two negative, so the balance is, in my opinion, uh, we had a lot of positive remarks uh going forward, and I think the business people as well as residents need to be a part of this committee. Uh, it's just like when Iron Man comes, they have all of the entities that are involved, the service people. And that is very well organized, and I mean, there's state police, emergency manager, the, you know, the whole camp, but it's very interesting and everybody's welcome to sit in on these meetings. So, that's my opinion. And I need your idea for the rest of you.
Okay, well. I don't think anybody's arguing that it's not a good event. I don't think, you know, I don't think people are saying, you know, yes, there are maybe a handful that just flat out don't want it. I think that it's a fine event, and yes, they do a great job setting up and breaking down, and they take all their trash, that's their job.
Yeah.
They are, as Mr. Olson pointed out, back in twenty fifteen, they were worth nine hundred mil. They're worth well over a billion now. And again, the owner of Advanced Media that owns World Triathlon Corporation, it's worth twenty billion. This is, you know, to come to our town, utilize our streets, take advantage of our parks, everything. And what do we get out of it at the end of the day? We're getting nothing.
Wow, and that's where I think we need to ask, you know, for a chunk of the money so that we can go like one of the uh persons in one of the emails that was read by Lisa uh about, why can't we get a donation toward our lighthouse?
We we need money for all sorts of things. We got new bathrooms, we can't afford it right now. Buy us a bath house. Give us money for the lighthouse. Give us twenty five percent of the ground.
There you go.
That, this is sort of where I stand, that's it. You you know, we need to negotiate with them and play hardball. Start high and let's meet somewhere. You know, the other thing is, I understand a lot of people volunteer, and that's great, and you know, thank you for volunteering, but at the end of the day, you're volunteering for a multi-billion dollar company. It's like, you know, Walmart's a multi-billion dollar company, you wanna go up and go to the loading, volunteer your time at the loading dock, unloading semi for Korea at Walmart? No, they can afford to pay these people in our community. But this is how Iron Man operates. They come in and they do this, and this is why communities over time get sick of this, and they say enough's enough. We don't want Iron Man crap. And the cat's out of the bag that Iron Man wants to go back to Traverse City, and Traverse City was playing hardball with them, and they have said we want, we want money for our, you know, if you're gonna come in and profit, you know, a couple million dollars, where's our piece of the pie? And so.
Well, and that was the other thing that reason for the two year is that gives them plenty of time to look at a different video also.
Right, but.
In in the meantime.
I'm gonna say right now that I'm not agreeing with the contract until they pay us a percentage.
We can make that part of the lawsuit.
Yeah, and I just have a opinion, I don't have a so sort of say, but I want to kind of give from other perspective too. I I when I first came to Frankfurt and I wasn't financially involved in as Iron Man as I am now, which is a point that I understand. But I see it, I I wanna be a voice also to those businesses that truly thrive. And are one of the busiest days of the year for them. That I don't think should be just negated or not. Okay, or topical and these, I've talked to businesses and say, this, this is like our Super Bowl. This event, and what does that do for their business or their employees? And the, you know, the amount of money they can give back to the community. You know, I I make it a point to make sure that I have a portion of my business that I give back to schools in certain events like this. Help with that and I'll be, I'll be perfectly frank, you know, they. It's a, it's a great event no matter what. Yeah, does it great bring big businesses, business to the town? Absolutely. Is it good for the town? Yeah. Are there inconveniences? Absolutely. There is tons of events we do in this town, tons. And there are inconveniences each and every event. And that's, but that's what we do to deal with. I mean, there's certain events that don't help my business too, but. That's okay, that's part of Frankfurt and this being a summer town. And I will agree with you, absolutely, I think they could do more, a hundred percent. I I.
To get back to.
Yeah, absolutely. I I'm more of giving back, give back to Frankfurt, give back to the schools, give back to. Uh foundations, I'm like, that's such a big thing for me, I. I budget literally money from my purchases so I can give back to the schools. That helps us, right? It's all part of the community, I. Uh you know, the first thing I learned here, when I came here was we all part of the solution, we're all part of the community. So they should be, if this event is so big, which it is, like, and they're rating us number one, right? We're like the best town. They should be a part of it. They should be a part of giving back to the community. And however that is monetarily, if it's giving backpacks, giving foods, whatever, needs to be a part of that. I agree, I agree with that wholeheartedly, but I wanted that voice of of those businesses out there that they, this is, this is a big deal for them.
You're, no, I'm not. I can argue that, and I'm gonna stand with businesses that suffer as well, I mean, there are. Many of businesses that it's a hardship, not to mention. I I spoke with the owners of Riverside Canal over the weekend, they decided to shut down Riverside Canal. They can do on a beautiful day like that, that's a twenty thousand dollar day that they just lost. Hmm um you know, Frankfurt Tackle Box, Frankfurt Hardware, I could list up many others. Um so, you know, yes, it's good for some, not good for all.
Yep.
Um not, you know, um. Also, I would like the fire chief to weigh in on this, so I know that he had some incidences uh with. Uh accidents during the race and trying to get to. The people that were injured or whatever, and if you could just touch on that, but Mike.
Well, a person incident happened and we were toned down for a bicycle accident on Phillip Island. And Crystal Lake Township, and what had happened is when we responded to that right with Ben's EMS. Um apparently the bicycles weren't letting us lights and sirens pass at all. Um and what had happened is they were, we tried to get behind the ambulance to draft off the ambulance and cut off our. Suburban and they were yelling and screaming at. My guy and I didn't think that was right, and I've already talked to the devolved it.
Well, and yeah, and when we had, we had uh. Virtual.
Yep.
Uh meeting with them, were you in on that conversation? And I believe Rebecca brought that up because. They always have a wrap up after the event to see what they did right and what they did wrong and Rebecca. Uh.
She brought that out. And then I guess the other one also, the Crystal Drive, which was a trauma one head injury. Wouldn't again wouldn't let us get through, so.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, that was brought up, I could, let us mention, I mean, that was brought up, yeah, I wasn't part of.
Yeah, uh you should have been part of that. On that, but yeah, there was um. Maybe three or four things that were brought up that uh state police did bring up. The fact that um they had to have uh. A car towed off of Main Street and they really felt that that should have been on the city. To make that happen instead of them having to make contact to have that individual towed. Off of Main Street.
One of the things that Alyssa. Wasn't aware of, maybe wasn't, wasn't, but brought to attention again was. That the Frankfurt Fire Department was contracted with also through the Crystal Lake Township, Lake Township. Alberta and Fillmore, um and I basically had to set a fire station up. Temporary in Alberta to cover, we got called for a medical up there on. Uh Strand Hill at that time, so uh not once but twice, we had to kind of. Put away that construction, but as I mentioned, Alyssa, I'm gonna have to set something up, Lake Township in order to cover. Crystal Downs and some of that area up there, granted, I can't.
Do you have the manpower to do so?
Uh.
The resources.
Gonna have to pay them.
Right, do you realistically have the resources?
It's gonna be, yeah.
Let me ask you a hypothetical. If I left the Crystal Downs and my house is on fire, are you coming to put it out that day?
I'm gonna do everything I can.
Let go, give, 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 does the, what does the reimbursements do? I mean, does that cover your costs?
Covers your costs for personnel, yeah.
For personnel.
And we say it's personnel.
But we're not hiring the wear and tear on our.
The city has a cost recovery order, and I started to, I put a lot of that in place, I said, okay.
Right, sure, which you should have, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and the county does the same, yeah, yeah. So that's what we did this year is we copied.
Yeah.
County history first, so.
Um also on um. To revert back to Goose Park. Um the carnival pays when they come to town, I don't know what that number is, I know that goes believed to the chamber. Because um we can ask Joanne and find out, I think that they get a percentage, you know, um.
They're they're getting a new one.
Yeah. The carnival donates percentage.
Of the revenue, yeah.
Of their revenue from that, uh I don't know what the number is, uh farmer's market. Those vendors that my in-laws vendors at the farmer's market. Granted, they don't make a lot of money, sometimes maybe five hundred, maybe a thousand on a good day, that would have been a good day. Uh farmer's market was moved to tractor supply. Nobody's going to tractor supply, they go to Frankfurt, they go to the farmer's market Frankfurt, or the Frankfurt farmer's market. They're not driving tractors. So you have. What are.
Yeah.
Totally local vendors that are taken ahead, not only they pay. A seasonal fee to be at that park, why are we giving this tire and pretty?
Well, don't you think that that could be all part of?
Absolutely, it should be five thousand a day or something to to have your stuff down there. Not to mention they are using our barricades and stuff like that, you should be renting those out.
This eight, nine days.
I'm sorry.
So I guess we're to the point uh. Either approving or denying this, so I'm gonna.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny it. Until. We get a contract that we can agree on for some sort of um financial compensation.
Well, here's my thought. This would be part of. Adding on to this motion that we would be reimbursed. Twenty five percent. Of the.
We, that's something that we need to sit down and come up with a number and Fire Man's gonna wanna negotiate that.
Well, we're going to have to do something soon because they need to know by the twenty second of the month, we come today.
What what happens if they don't? We heard that a month ago that.
Registration.
Okay.
They need listening.
I asked, what is their drop dead deadlines and they said October twentieth.
Well, my thought is is they really wanna be here, they'll wait until we can iron out the details.
Because if we.
Probably speak.
Um if we put conditions on it, either they accept our conditions or they, that's the way I would get it. You know.
Specifically, either way, you're gonna have to try to, you're gonna to get, negotiate something from them, either way, no matter what.
You know, so really, we're, we're basically making a motion at the table that's, in my opinion, until. We have a contract in front of us that states, no, that states what we're gonna, yeah.
Okay.
We. If we approve it, we're saying we're doing it. And we want X, Y and Z, and they might say no.
Mm-hmm.
So.
What if we approve on the conditions?
No.
Yeah, I think it should just be tabled.
On the the conditions that uh we negotiate. A reimbursement for the use of our city.
Again, that sounds like table it till we have.
Yeah, he's gonna motion, so either he gets.
Yeah, I do have the motion on the table.
Me either. That is so, right?
So just the motion is to deny, is there a second? So that, so that is is dead in the water, so let's begin another motion.
Okay, so. Uh let me see how I can phrase.
All right, I'll make another motion that we table this. Um until. We have in writing what what it is that we want financially.
Do I have a second?
I will second that with the condition that we need and list. What we want. Uh. Within the next week.
Fair.
Okay, so Brady, are you modifying your of your system table until a financial compensation has been determined?
Correct. But Joanne seconded.
Within a week.
Brady, you good with that? This is the the next upcoming week?
Yes.
And then how you're, then you're gonna have to have another special meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll call Stratton?
Sure.
Crowe?
Obscene.
Corder?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully that's our conversation. Alright. The next agenda item under new business, recreation board appointee. It is my privilege to. Uh reappoint Alma Temple House to the parks. Well, this says heck, but I think it has parks. And recreation committee with a two-year term to expire ten nineteen or twenty twenty six. Crowe?
Yes.
Corder?
Yes.
Olson?
Absolutely.
Stratton?
Yes.
Alma, how many years has have you been on that committee now?
Hundred.
Well, Alma.
Okay. Pickleball donation reimbursement. We've been batting this around for some time, I passed half a session with Chris. Um. You wanna take it from here, Chris?
Sure, so August, August twenty first to twenty fourth, Miss P. Presented the city with this all donation so they can continue on the project for the pickleball. She made a two thousand dollar donation along with these other donations. And as she pointed out in her public public input, that it was for so-and-so. And my staff's events, we get for so-and-so a lot for in memory of or in honor. There was no communication prior to her making a deposit that she was writing a check to cover a donation that was for fun. There's no communication, now she will like reimbursement for those funds, which are now in a reserve fund for the city. Um.
What she wrote that check out for was to hold until. This other person's money could be withdrawn.
It was not held, she gave it as a deposit.
Okay.
With the idea that she was going to get reimbursed.
Correct.
But she never spoke to me. Had she come to me forthcoming prior to that, I would have said, this isn't a good plan. Even the auditor disagree, it's not a good plan, uh the city attorney believes it's not a good plan. Now, I wanna be clear, not in this case does it open up, open us, open the city up for any issues. But if someone were going to be dishonest or not trustworthy, they could fund the money through the city in this capacity. Not that this is case in this, I truly do not believe that. But it opens the city up for issues in Rosso working on a renovation house, so we are equipped with a situation. Since all of this has transpired, we received the funds from the investment, their visiting grants. Um the check has since been donors put stop payment on this check. So now the check is no longer in play, um there was one instance where the city did give back funds for donation. And that was with the Lake Michigan Beach project, you had an individual that gave fifty thousand dollars. Made it in writing that if the money was not served for that purpose, then he was to get the funds back. Which makes, and once the project fails on the beach, his funds are returned. And the auditors completely agreed because it was in writing and it was upfront. Um so now, um. I'm not really sure if the city wants to go with this as far as council, city council wants to go with this, the check that has been. Was supposed to be reversed for is now stop payment, I'm gonna ask avoid it, um so. This all could have been avoided with some communicating, it's a question. Um I don't think in an anomaly perspective, I don't think it's just practice to um. Allow people to fund a project and then what happens later, someone says, you know what, I really don't like that you didn't use the money I wanted to. I would like my money back after we've already done the project. We were opening ourselves up for a slipper slot. Um so it's up to the, either way, it has to be a motion of the city council, these funds are now in a reserve. So in order to pay that out, I would need the motion to include that, that money will be coming from the reserve um per. The auditor's requirements, um but it's solely on how we're gonna handle this situation, it's a difficult.
And the latest correspondence was is that individual is still going to send the two thousand dollars, am I correct?
Um mine was is that they had some things wanted to discuss with us and she wanted to know how it came out.
So um I think I just got ready now today, I think. Still, I could find it.
My advice is she was worried about the rest of the bill for. Um pickleball courts and I advised her, Mr. Mills is the purchasing agent for the city. Perhaps, you know, she can work with him for the remainder of the funds to be used for that, for the cost of the remainder of the pickleball. And that um he and I would work together to make sure that it would, it would come out of the reserve funds.
Hmm. I hear this, where she said. Says that company contacted us last week to give us additional information that. I will need to pass on to you prior to anyone going to the bank with their check.
I received from Charles Schwab that check is a stop payment, it's been voided, so it's voided. Charles Schwab sent me that email, so.
Just recently?
Yeah, 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 a week ago.
This was today that she. This was today that she sent that out.
So.
I think at this time. My concern was that to. Say that we did return that. Is there still enough money to pay for the project? And. Right now they're showing, I don't know if, uh, bills have been. Uh, paid, but they've got sixty seven thousand. In reserves at this time, and what was the total on the project, seventy five?
Yeah, that's what I'll be gonna see each replanting, yeah.
So being that that check was a stop pay that was supposed to replace hers. I, I don't see how we could, I don't see how we could give it back.
I mean, going forward, Ross and are working on, he gave me some templates. To look through and there's lots of different things. It's not just monetary donations, we need to think about inclined donations and. You know, there's lots of different things to take into consideration. Uh, when this comes into play, it wasn't, we intently hoped to have this ready to present after this was a. Policy, but I think that's gonna be a working document for a very long time. I think if we got, get something on the books, it's a good idea, but. Going forward, it's going to have to evolve and work.
And at this point, at this point, as far as I'm concerned, this is between her and that other person.
The tax deductible donation thing.
Yeah, I, I would like, I mean, I agree with you on all this. I, I'll make a motion to deny the reimbursement. The two thousand dollars, uh, from the big law reserve that she gave to the city to cover. It having donated.
Right. Is there a second, second?
Florida?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Stratton?
Yep.
Crowe?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, being that Dale isn't here, I was part of the negotiation on the lease contract. I believe you all got a copy of it. Pretty much the same as what, uh, we did with the. The TPO A M. Uh, we did put some additional language in there. Two of the things that we changed was that I mean, I mean. Higher after till my first of this year. Will all be on a different vacation schedule. That was one. And we clarified, uh, the use of free vehicles. Uh, in there, um. The vacation schedule now will be the same as what the TPOA. Of anybody hired after July first, we went retroactive. First, we were gonna say, no, you're the ones that. At the last minute pulled out of the other union and went with this one. So, but we did negotiate that that we would resurrect to, to. Line twenty six, I think it was. And it would be better to that's it. Instead of back to July one. So that's pretty much it.
I still haven't received the, the contract from Ross, still in review.
And we've been saying sending any.
Yes.
Thank from, uh. The attorney, this must be glaring, he had looked at it. And at that time, he saw nothing glaring.
Are, are officers happy with?
Yes.
The contract and the, the new union, okay?
Yep, yep, they are, and it went very smoothly.
Well, in that case. I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty law for twenty twenty seven Michigan paternal order, please contract labor council. For the city of Frankfurt, Frankfurt Police Department pending approval changes made by the city attorney.
Second. Florida?
Yes.
Olson?
Yep.
Stratton? Yeah, Crowe?
Yes.
Okay, MERS, uh, service credit resolution. Last month we talked about that, we opted in with MERS. So that, uh. Miss Spenceley. Uh, could purchase her five years of service. This is just. She has decided she wants to go ahead and buy those five years. And of course, it's at her cost. And, uh, there was questions about how this is going to affect our unfunded. The way MERS works is that. When they start drawing, which she still can't draw until she's sixty. Whatever you put in, like their copay amount, like they pay two percent, like for a busy. Two point two percent plus her contribution, that is drawn off first before they. Start drawing onto the city. So, and she can't retire until she's sixty, which is seven, seven years from now. Uh, so it's not going to affect the city only if, uh. Uh, the rates increase. The way Tony explained it to me, it might be like one percent. You know, so it's kind of based on the market.
The other good thing is that this amount that she's putting in this lump sum goes into the city coffers and they invest our money. So, and for those seven years. The city has to utilize those funds.
Right.
And grow the portfolio too, so that's why that small percentage, you can save one percent.
And isn't that going to help our unfunded amount too?
Um, it, hmm, no, but it will, it, it depends on how much the return, the return is almost.
Yeah.
Like, uh, I mean, MERS does a very good job, um, investing our funds.
Right.
So by her giving basically the lump sum. That, I mean, it does, it does a lot, that's to have her capital.
Yeah.
It, funded liability. It's still going to be on her house that, you know, she has five, three to five years. Um, but like Tony had, had said, it's going to be a, a percentage, a small percentage versus. Like six or seven or anything like this.
Right.
So she was like between three to five years.
Plus the fact that every year for how long, I can't remember. We are giving twelve thousand over our required amount every year to reduce. But did we up that this year?
We kept it the same.
Okay, so we're, we're giving twelve thousand dollars. A year toward our unfunded liability above and beyond of what we're billed for.
So that was just one other side of it. Well, you know, it, it'll be a period of time before. How much of that return can you, you get on this money compared, because we can't say what the future's gonna be.
Right.
So to answer the question about the unfunded liability, we don't know, because we go to future week.
Right.
So.
Which will be at least.
Oh, seven years.
Seven years down the line, yeah. So. I will make a motion to approve. Mayor Hallward to sign the resolution establishing authorized signatories. For the MERS contract and service credit purpose approvals, allowing Miss Spenceley. To purchase up to five years of service. Okay.
Olson?
Yep.
Stratton?
Yep.
Crowe?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes, and also, does it mean that we can always opt in? We, at any time, if we think we, you know. Want to, we can opt that out.
And our opt-in that we're in is just allow employees to get. Um, quotes.
Of, of evaluation.
So at any time, yes, you can say, you know, we're not gonna opt anymore, we wanna close it. Um, and it's a case by case basis according to whether, you know. How, how wants to hit one.
Okay, the next is Michigan tax tribute and mediation. Uh, I have been asked by Ross to, uh. Listen in, if you will, on a pending case with the Michigan text. Try to, you know, and be part of the mediation. And Mr. Crawford will be there also. Uh, so we just need approval for me to represent the city in these negotiations.
Make a, I'll make a motion to approve authorization. Of Mayor Hallward to represent the city of Frankfurt negotiations. And to reach a resolution within the property value of. Nine hundred twenty eight thousand, eight hundred fifty eight dollars and six hundred thirty four thousand, eighteen dollars. In the pending MTT case.
I'll second that, Rachel.
So Wyatt did go and he did research according to this and these numbers behind.
Yeah.
He's in where, where he came up with this, too, so.
He's done excellent job, and I hope you all took time to read this quarterly report at the very back. He's, uh, and. While we're on the subject of this, oh, he better be going off.
Yeah, Corolla?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rainier, I did receive a letter from him and I forwarded. I answered that, his letter. Pretty much the things that he said tonight, and I also, uh. Pass that on to Wyatt, our city assessor, and he's already been to the property. Uh, and explained to Mr. Rainier. That he can't do anything until the December board of review and there could be some changes that he saw. So, just. If I sent him a letter saying. That I was pretty much turning it over to Wyatt, so. Okay, on to. Emergency communication tower lease agreement. This is something working on with the county for quite some time. Today at two thirty, I get an email from. The county administrator saying. That there was some language changed by their attorney. And so. Yeah, I have, and, and I was very confused because it was read out. And there's, or lined out, there was blue notes in, yes, it was. Well.
Till we get an actual.
Or, uh. After review of our. City attorney, because it got sent back to him again. She says it was just language change. But like I said, I got it at two thirty today and I didn't know any more. Table.
Making table, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, oh, I'm not gonna go down until.
Please, you know.
Make it so.
Oh, shit.
I'll make attention to table.
Yeah.
Out of both MERS contracts, I agree with until we have fully managed, I'll say.
Yeah, I, this, this wasn't time for me to sort through that.
Yes.
Corolla?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes.
Olson?
Yep.
Stratton?
Yep.
So in your last part, there was pretty amended. I did submit versus an email to all of you. Hopefully my fault that this was not on the agenda. Um, so on your move, back in civil there, there's the letter. From, so.
And because Dale is not here, I'm going to, uh. Put this over, um. Brady to take charge of it because this basically in the long run concerns me. And I would have to abstain from it anyway, so.
Okay, so.
Turn the chair over to you.
All right, no, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read the letter, but. Basically, Chief Wazowski is stating that. He will not be present at any meetings that the mayor expresses. So, um. What Mr. Charter is looking to do is to compel. Uh, by a vote of two of the council to have chief attend meetings. Uh, I talked to Dale a little bit about this, we're not, I think. You know. He does not need to attend every meeting, you know, special meetings, et cetera, but. I think the public maybe is asking where he is, um. And, you know. After the council, you know, we look down here, he's not here, we need to have him answer a question. However, I don't know if there's still ongoing litigation, my, or, you know, some sort of. Ongoing civil suit, maybe, I'm not entirely sure. Uh, I think Dale could touch on that more. Um, and my understanding is that he was advised by his attorney. To, uh, not be in the same room as the mayor. So, how do you have? He needs, I mean, I agree with you, he needs to be present. And for, to answer questions to. He's part of the, he's part, you know, and I also see the other side of it too, which can be complex. So. So here we are.
Here we are.
Um, do we, yeah, I.
Like I said, I have.
You guys, you have any thoughts on this matter?
I think he needs to be here.
Yeah.
There's several witnesses that, you know, I mean, don't be alone living there. But it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Public, really. There's people here to whatever.
Yeah, at the end of the day, uh, there's this job, this job. And we have to, we have to. We have to do our job. And, you know, so I think. You know, until there's any something in writing that says that we can't. In writing to this council, I see no reason why he shouldn't be here. Would that be a? Okay. Okay, um. So in this case, it appears it only takes two to figure it out, um.
We still need a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we still need a motion on this matter. Uh, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion, uh, to approve. The compulsory attendance and meetings letter for police chief. Wasowski. So, Crawford.
So Hallward is abstaining. Olson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stratton?
Yes.
Corolla?
Yes.
Don't hold me because there's the winner's chair, so we can some, some.
So, I'll take the chair back.
Please do.
Okay. Uh, public inputs. Please, uh, at your podium, state your.
Other being, one hundred River Road. Um, I'm, I would really like to see the Ironman come back and I'm really disappointed with how the council's handling it. Um, you had the open meeting, most of the people were for it and. Some of the issues that were brought up, I think can be handled and remedied. And now it seems like you're trying to change the contract that. The Ironman's expecting. Uh, and I just. I hope they turn you down, even though I'd really like to see them, I think they're handling it well. Have it, you had a contract set for two years. You do that and then if there's further participation of the Ironman here. Then you renegotiate.
Thank you, Dale. Any other public input?
Yes. Christine, urgent emergency chief. We saw we got elected the, the best city for Ironman. Don't think. That, we still, you know, our company, wherever Randy went. Um, multi-billion dollar company, didn't do that on purpose.
I, I'm sorry.
They don't think that they didn't do it on purpose. Don't you think, isn't there one other place that Ironman has done in Michigan? And nobody else, Traverse City, Boone? Over, correct?
Sure.
So how could they say that we're the number one place when they've never experienced any of this? My thing is, that was, and then I saw Mr. Tash, that's why I called him up at the meeting on TV. My thing is that was, and then I saw Mr. Tash, that's why I called him up at the meeting on TV. Saying they would like it back. Iron Man doesn't want to do it there because they're asking for money. No, it's they, I feel like they're looking at us as chumps. Look at this town, we can get everybody to volunteer, everybody's in, they're all doing it, we don't have to pay a darn thing. That's my opinion. I do think that you're on the right track. Get your money together, figure it out, ask for the moon, take the stars. But we, as a community, there's lots of ways that money can be used. Unfortunately, not towards prevention, which I would like to get that solved. But. It can't be used that way. But to me is, don't let them bamboozle you. You, you are offering something pretty, pretty generous here. And let, just know who's in charge. They're not in charge. You are. Thank you.
Hi, city day, Chris like township. I would just like to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the dog pot. It's awesome. Um, thank you for the water getting in the air now.
Right.
And stuff, and, and you said there's gonna be, um. Some rules and all, is that gonna be put on a plaque or something?
Yeah. It's pretty basic, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, wanted to know if it's gonna get put up. It'd be kinda nice to have something that does say it is the dog pot. I'm not sure if everybody realizes what it is, but it has been utilized quite a bit. And, um, most of the time, I think it wasn't, it wasn't really a problem. And, uh, but really, really, I think it really enhances our town and. Uh, we, is it gonna be open all year or are you gonna, I mean, I know there's a lot of, you know, snow, probably not.
Yeah, we're not gonna shovel it or clear.
No.
Yeah.
Right, right, the old man of Dale. We take that. Yeah.
Obviously.
Right.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, fun. Enjoy.
Yeah, it was, it's really great and we really.
That's, yeah, one rule. Yeah, thank you.
There will be a plaque on there.
You gotta hang your own hat.
To the owner, the, or the person that donated the money for it, so. All right, here it is. Any other public input? I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll say that.
Holwerd.
Yes.
Yeah.
Stratton.
Yeah.
Why I just decided to. I went, I had three, of course, of course. I drink, I do too. Five, one, three, it's a real. There. That returned while we all seen these stones down to. My, she's. It was. We asked, we asked, we're proud of you, you're a people's honor, you're a huge one. And once we see I can see that, like it's on, it's been built over, it's been for a couple of months. My, 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 wash a little, I can't. You dress up, say, oh. You some previous players playing, but what you're trying to. Just, ah, they, it's like, it's just. Oh, just the owner, yeah, she's too early. I mean, we've got two reasons. The beginning, but yeah, she's hard to hire. Awesome. Yeah, well, by Jason, I mean, I'm just, not sure, dog. Your, the hint, it sounds like. It's really, she gets so hot, so, but it's, so I think I'm saying, I'm saying, what else is? It's nice, well, I'm here to, and I'm such a fan of Facebook, saying, in dream, big rock. My, my, he was. Do themselves. Well, they're like. Well, I think it's not.